Good evening, and welcome to the Budget and Finance Committee. Today is Thursday, June 2nd, and this is the continuation of the budget for the fiscal year 2033 discussions. And we would like to read the following. Pursuing Chapter 20 of the Act 2022, this meeting of the Budget and Finance Committee is being conducted both in person and supposedly via remote participation. A reminder of a person who would like to view this meeting in progress might either attend in person at the locations above or use any of the following access locations: the Facebook Lawrence City Council page and the YouTube Lawrence City Council page. To my left, I have Councillor District C, to my right, I have Councillor District C, Gergo de Rosario, and to my left, I have Councillor at Large, Ana Levy. I would like you all to join me for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. We would like to apologize, this meeting was supposed to start at 6:30. It is now 6:55. I would like to get a motion to get our resist. So move.
Second.
All right, there is a motion on the table, properly second, I call the question. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So with the continuation of the budget discussion for fiscal year 2023, we have few departments that are going to be presenting their budget today. I would like to, every single one of you, to state your name and address for the record and that the page with your budget is located on the book. So people that are looking at us and have the budget book, they can follow. So the first department that I would like to call today is the Department of Services. Start with that. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, councillors. Jamie Melendez, 210 Merrimack Street, Lawrence, Mass. I first like to ask, you forgive my attire, I was on the road, come up from the Cape.
Budget. The page of the.
Of 140. Again, submitted level funded, nothing to add, barring any of your questions.
Just go through and we can go from there.
Let me back up. So my budget is a unique budget. It's, I have a budget that is dependent on veteran services for our veterans and their families in the community. So that budget typically is reimbursed by the state at 75%. So for example, I issue veterans and their families $100,000. That is reimbursed at 75%. We would receive, the city would receive, a couple of years later, $75,000 reimbursement from the state. That is one part of my budget. That budget is established and regulated by Massachusetts General Laws. So regardless of what it is, it's dependent on that year. Recently, over the last couple of years, specifically with COVID and the other services that unemployment has provided, a lot of my veterans have come off. So you're going to see that my budget this year is a little less than what it was last year for the reimbursement, the veterans' disbursement. That is because that part of my budget fell off. A lot of veterans passed away due to COVID. A lot went on to different services due to unemployment. So I am projecting about $350,000 for the year. That is one part of my budget. The rest is the veteran services, office, staff, and operations. Again, I just want to thank the mayor for the allowance of the $25,000 for extra services that we provide. But it is level funded, and I have nothing to add.
Can you go over about, on the other purchases and services, the extra $25,000 that you're getting this year?
So in the past, what we have done is with veteran ceremonies and celebrations is depended on donations. Moving forward, we're looking at trying to take care of those things personally from the office standpoint. So for example, if I was to give four plaques to four families, four Gold Star families at an event, it would come from my office versus from donations. If I was to buy flowers, if I was to buy refreshments and refreshments for the crowd, it would come from my office now. If I was to book a location for an event, it will come from Department of Veteran Services.
Fair enough. Councillors, is there's any questions for that veteran service budget for this year? Councillor Rosario.
Thanks, Chair. Through you. Last year, FY '22, you had a budget of $628,458. This year is $523,458. That's a difference of $105,000. I know that you're getting an extra $25,000 in purchases and services, but if you add it up, that means that you, according to this, your budget is less, about $80,000. Are you going to be able to make it this year with $80,000 left?
Yes, absolutely. Again, you are adding in the disbursement that I give our veterans and their families. And again, last year, we did closer to $500,000 in disbursement. This year, or in 2022, we were averaging closer to $350,000. So because of the fall off of clients deceased and other services specifically for those that are unemployed and going, instead of Chapter 115 and disbursement, going to the unemployment, which was, as we all know, absolutely catered to those that are unemployed. That's where you have that fall off. And so I anticipate that I might get some of those people back, but probably not the same amount of numbers.
All right, there's any other questions on this? It is important to recognize that the Veterans Office is a two peoples' office, and everything that is done there is done by you and the collaboration of the Veteran Service Department and other departments, which is always grateful to work as a team. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, councillor, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next department, I know that our list is listed as, the first one, the Department of Public Work, but the Chair of this committee would like, he's not able to attend at this moment to the meeting. He's here in the building, but he's not able right now. So he's asking me to please continue with the list set for the Department of Public Work. He would like to be part of the discussion. So as a courtesy to the Chair, we would like to go to the second department on the list, which is the Inspection Services.
Good evening, councillors. Mike Imano, Director for Inspection Services, located here at City Hall, 200 Common Street. Inspection Services budget is comprised of six different divisions: the Inspection Services Administration, Code Services, Building, Waits and Measures, Public Health and Licensing. I'm sorry?
May I have a page?
Yes, and that starts on page 89. Would you like me to summarize all of them, one by one? What's your preference?
Yes, I would like you to go over, starting one by one.
Okay, great.
And just detail every section of it.
Okay, so first up is Inspection Services Administration on page 89. This budget, for the most part, is level funded. There's a couple additions. Salary increases from collective bargaining agreements, as well as a slight increase for mailing for services of notice of $4,900. And then there's some adjustments for things like longevity, which depending on attrition, when inspectors come and leave, is different by person to person. I'm going to just pause at each of these, if you have any specific questions, if that's the way you'd like me to do it.
What I would like you to do is like go into Inspection Services and then go to the details of that in terms of personnel and everything that you think is important, and then go to the next, the Code Enforcement, Building Inspection, and so far.
Okay, great. So I'll describe the personnel in each department. The Inspection Services Administration, again, most of the budget here is salary. It's comprised of a Director, Building Commissioner, and two clerks. There is, other than that, that's the most of that budget. I'm going to just keep rolling to the next division here, which is our Code Enforcement, Code Services Division.
Let me open the floor to the other councillors, to see if they have for that a specific section of the Inspection Services, if they have any questions. If you can add a little bit of what the department do and add a little more on that, please.
I'm sorry, did you say what the department does?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's going to be a little bit of a merge, a hybrid here, because all of the departments work together. So it'll be a little bit messy, but I'll try to be clear. So the Administration of Inspection Services, again, it's mostly the supervisory and management personnel plus two clerks who work across all of the different divisions in Code Services, Licensing, Board of Health. They do a little bit of everything. The budget, again, is comprised mostly of salary. There's some line items for training, as well as office supplies and operating supplies, which has not changed. Office supplies in this division, again, is shared by the other five divisions, same as operating supplies as well. And there is clothing allowances based on collective bargaining agreements with the clerks.
And you also do code enforcement, right?
Code enforcement would be the next division. You want me to jump right into that?
Let me open the floor. The councillors, there's any questions on this part of the Inspection Services? We're good? You might continue to the next one, please.
Thank you, sir. The next division is Code Services. In Code Services, overall, again, mostly flat level funded. There is an increase on overtime. This division. This division is mostly health inspectors, what are traditionally health inspectors. There is a total of six under this budget. In addition to the increase in overtime, there's a slight decrease in longevity, again, because of some inspectors leaving who had more senior time, as well as a decrease in salaries for the same reason, the attrition of senior inspectors who had higher steps than the new hires had. In Code Services, for the most part, there is a slight employee benefits, like clothing allowance. There's also little set aside for training. The way that the training budget works is, depending on the program, some, there's a lot of cross-training. So sometimes that moves back and forth between divisions as well. As far as the duties of the inspectors, again, it's a little bit of a hybrid. These are traditional health inspectors. They do a number of different things. They work with building inspectors who also do some health inspections, food inspections, pool inspections, animal inspections, housing inspections, and many other things. And I will pause at that to see if you have any questions.
There's any questions on this?
Yes.
All right, Counselor Levy?
So you say, you say that vacation is a little bit down because of the people, but it's not. Vacation increase.
If I, I, if I said vacation, I was mistaken.
So last year was six thousand five forty-six. This year is six thousand seven hundred eighty-five. It's not too much, but it's not a decrease, it's an increase.
If I said vacation, I was wrong, Counsel. I meant to say longevity. So there was a decrease in longevity and a decrease in salaries because of the attrition.
Yeah, it's a decrease in salary, but it's an increase in vacation.
Yeah, vacation maybe, so vacation is tied, it's based on buyback, it's tied into their salary. So depending on when inspectors retired or left the department and which ones remained and were new hires, that's how that's calculated.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question. So on the overtime sections, you have extra twenty-three thousand for this year. Last year, you have twenty-two thousand dollars. Obviously, through April sixth, you have spent around thirty-four thousand five hundred in overtime. Can you explain, other than COVID? Can you explain as of how you guys work, work out that, how you guys split the overtime? Perhaps how, what is the need for it?
Sure. So without a doubt, I would be remiss in not mentioning COVID again, even though you said besides that. So communicable disease investigations is definitely a big part of this year's budget with that. In addition to that, sometimes it's a question of just being behind on hiring. So this year, we, we did hire quite a, quite a few inspectors. I think we almost doubled our staff between inspectors that we received off of grant money. So before that happened, we were very behind to catch up on things like, whether it be housing inspections or food inspections or emergency incidents. Some of that extra work was done on overtime. A lot of the money that was brought into the department was this year from, from COVID money, either grant money or money that would be reimbursed by FEMA.
Counselor Rosario?
Going back to the overtime. To me, it seems like there's no inspector out there. It's about violations that I see, and it's about money for overtime. So how much money do you guys bring in if you're in my department and, and code enforcement and stuff like that? I mean, overtime, it's fine, but it has to be justified. And again, there's, it seems like there's no inspector out there. Once again, with all the violations, we've seen a number of vacations, and all the prisons violating contracts and stuff. And if you don't pick them up, all the violations, it seems like code enforcement, I mean, is that what you see?
Yeah. So to answer your question, Counselor, there was a time where we had very few inspectors. Now we've, we've almost doubled our staff, but we are very much out in the community. Just to throw a few numbers, I have some of my older notes. We issued, just in correction orders alone, this is in inspections, but actually issued a document ordering somebody to correct, about five hundred and forty-eight in January, five hundred thirty-two in February. These are some of my older notes, I apologize. But we're averaging hundreds of correction orders every month. Our inspections are in the hundreds. Inspections come by doing, it could be an inspection of a business, or it could be out giving a violation for trash. They could be doing other things. And keep in mind, we also do have inspectors who, these are health inspectors, so they make phone calls to COVID patients on a daily basis. We just had a spike in COVID cases, so they're doing other work in addition to inspections. But we, our inspections, our inspection numbers, believe it or not, have increased dramatically. There's just one month, I can think, I think we had about fifty-five thousand dollars written in tickets last month. We're on pace, again, much higher than we, we ever have before. But we're on pace for about five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars for the year with tickets. Those will either be collected or go to lean on property. So there's a lot of work being done, and you do.
Just historically, just one of the, that's the total which you brought in for the last few years.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. So just, I'll just go back the past. Actually, it's a nice increase here. Back in two thousand nineteen, thank you, Mark, we were at one million, one hundred and nine. Fiscal year two thousand twenty, one thou, one million, two hundred thousand, I'm gonna estimate. We went to one point three in fiscal year twenty-one. We were at one point six in fiscal year twenty-two. So we, again, drastic increases in revenue. The inspectors are very new, but they're working quickly to get training. We've taken, taken a lot of training classes. I think they're working at a pretty good speed. Very proud of their, their accomplishments so far. They have a lot more to grow, but I, I think they're doing a great job and they're getting out there more than the average inspector does.
Just a follow-up on that, on that question in the Counselor Rosario have. Is that the total amount of dollars collected by, by all of the departments? Or that's only code enforcement and violations?
That is the total for all departments. So there's, again, some inspectors are issuing building permits. So as you increase capacity with inspectors, there's just more time to do a quality job on things, even reviewing permits, making, enforcing things like business inspections. Building permits alone to scrutinize those permits and make sure people are paying what they should be for valuations. That increases the building permit cost. So with more training, with more inspectors, it's, we're just, we're a department that does produce revenue in, in many different ways, and it's, it's just growing and growing every year. Counselor Levy?
Thank you. That sheet that you already have with you, is just only for your department? Or this is for something else, that maybe we can have a copy of that?
This, yeah, Mark, I know you just handed me this. This is from my department. It's, again, everything from pool inspections to burial permits, building inspections, food inspection fees, trash ordinance fines, milk inspections.
Can we have a copy, please?
You can have this one.
Thank you.
For the counselors, it's also identified on page nineteen or page sixteen in your budget book. That's generally the Inspection Services revenues are on page sixteen.
So while, while we wait, I just wanted to ask a quick question. So I'm, I'm looking at, so page seventeen, trash ordinance fines. There was an increase from FY twenty to FY twenty-one. From FY twenty-one to FY twenty-two, it's, you know, it looks like we're not gonna be at that same amount. Yet, it's not like there are issues with trash within the city. So I'm just trying to understand why there's, is there any more? I'm trying to understand why there, there'll be a, a decrease there. You know, everywhere I go, every time there's trash day, I see a lot of barrels that are overfilling, you know, that all of us have probably gone to you at some point or another about areas that might be a little infested. So no, so we're looking at. No, no. Trash ordinance fines.
Forty-seven, seventy-six.
Yeah. That's ninety, yeah, no, ninety thousand. So, so, so the issue, if you look at FY twenty-one, you look at FY twenty, thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars came in. FY twenty-one, a hundred and twenty-seven thousand came in. This year, we're at eighty-one. So we probably, you know, we'll, we'll get by the end of the year to a hundred thousand. I guess what, what I'm trying to understand, and like usually, if the fines are going down, what you would think is that there are less issues that are like this. In my view, and again, it's just. I feel like that has stayed the same. So my question to you, Director, is sort of, if, if you can help me understand that.
Sure, absolutely. It's a great question. There is not, there's still lots of issues that have to be taken care of in the city. This particular timeframe, we did lose a lot of inspectors. We had inspectors that left the city. We had, we didn't have a grant that allowed us to hire six inspectors in addition to our staff. We were understaffed. We added a lot of inspectors at the end of this year. There was a, a short period of time, we were very aggressive with our training, but it was towards the end of the year and the beginning of this year, where we were getting the inspectors out in the streets. This line item that you're looking at for revenue, I believe, is not just trash, but also other fines. But again, with all of the issues, I anticipate that this is gonna go, go up drastically now that we have a, a strong workforce and additional inspectors. Again, just last month, I, I can't remember if I said this before you walked in, but I believe we were at fifty-five thousand dollars, which was the bulk of this year. So it was, we were very slow to start. And again, that's not, that's tickets collected, as well as what could be outstanding, which may not be reflected in this number. So some of this would be attached as liens due to our new forty-U ordinance. But overall, between our forty-U liens and the tickets coming in, I anticipate there's gonna be a drastic increase with that workforce again. Okay, good to know.
A couple of things that I would like to, to discuss. So the Inspection Service Department is, is one of the most important departments in the city of Lawrence, because it's, it's the code violation that goes there. So are you currently full of staff right now?
We, we were full staff. We just lost two people. One transferred out of the city, one transferred within another department. And we do have one-third position that's been filled by, it's a plumbing inspector position. It's been filled by a temporary plumbing inspector. We've had some trouble getting a qualified plumbing inspector. The other position is a building official. We did send out an offer letter. I, I don't think that person is accepted for that position. So again, three total, as of today, three vacancies, one plumbing, one building, and one general code that we'll have, and that's as of recently. Other than that, we were, we were pretty close to fully staffed. We were fully staffed with the temporary plumber until this past month.
And around how many people the department has, in total, of, of all departments?
Total, we have, I'll just rattle off these positions. We have, of course, Director, Building Commissioner. We have twenty-one inspectors, six of those are grant positions, and two of those are recent openings. And we have three clinicians, two public health nurses, one pharmacist. Two of those are grant positions. We have a paid licensing board of three positions. We have a Board of Health, only one member gets paid. And we have currently twenty-three clinicians, pharmacists, and nurses who are doing vaccination work and reimbursed by FEMA, so you would not see them this, in this budget.
Interesting. So, so at some point, I would like to see somehow, one way or another, a proactive approach to do, to do for the code violations. I know that probably that's not, you're not able to do it until you're full of staff. But understanding that a lot of the code enforcement, it's an issue that is affecting quality of life for a lot of people, having that opportunity to be up there and doing a proactive approach, instead of reacting when you have a phone call, will be a lot better for the department. I know that the department have changed a lot since last time, or since you took over. But I mean, I think it's a lot, a lot, a lot that we can do, that we can work, and we can ensure that, that's been done. Working on that, that way, it will help out a lot of people. Another thing that I would like to know, perhaps, when it comes to working overtime, and now they have twenty-three thousand dollars more, I noticed that through our Lawrence, most of the constructions happen on a Saturday and Sundays. And I always wondering why, obviously, a lot of people don't show the department in those construction have, have been done during the time that we don't have an inspector that can check those out. We all know, we all have seen it. A lot of people choose to do that because they know that on the system, we have a loophole. And I'm wondering how, or if, if it is within the plan for this year and spending that overtime, if that's one of the things that you're planning on doing?
It's definitely something that we're considering as far as a nighttime and weekend program. Two different issues that I, I know Mayor Brian DePena is very passionate about, cleaning the streets and trash, which is why we ramped up those inspections. So that is an issue that he's very well aware of and passionate about, as am I, as well as we've, we've spoke about just that, Counselor, about people doing work over the weekend. We did start an experimental program with the Building Commissioner earlier this year, actually, I think it's the last year, where we would do Saturday inspections. Specifically, we would do them based off of things that we were behind on, one-ten, table-one-ten inspections from the building code. So as the inspector was out there, we were producing more revenue than it cost in overtime to see if it worked, and it did in fact work. We're actually still doing it today. In fact, I give Commissioner Palumbo credit. He's still going out on Saturdays. He does not get overtime, but he's very passionate about his work, and he's been doing the one-ten inspections. As he's out there, he is identifying things like roofs being done or anything in plain sight. The inspectors who are on call, they do get called out quite a bit over the weekend. They're also instructed to, if you see something, specifically building construction projects that are obvious that there's no permit on, to, to also, also report those. This is a, a very big city. I greatly appreciate all of your passion, this Council. You, you've all clearly shown that you understand the importance of inspectional services. I do agree, it is one of the most important departments, if not the most important in the city, for the quality of life of residents and our children. And these are all things that we are super, hyper-aware of, and we're working on all of them, and we, we wanna continue to build. We know we can do things better. We're so excited about the staff that we have. They're, they're very passionate, they're very excited about their mission. They've, they've all bought into health, safety, and equity in our city. But we, we do have a dense city, we have a lot of work ahead of us, and I think you're gonna see a lot of improvements with all of these issues you're bringing up.
So another thing that I would like to, thank you for that information. Another thing that I wanted to bring up is that there is a lot of people that don't understand the importance of the departments and how they can improve a lot of things within the neighborhood when they actually, if they see something, they say something. But people, people don't feel confident that, you know, they, the, the system, the system works. I mean, sometimes they don't say nothing because they don't wanna be up there in a situation that they have, you know, a bad reputation with the neighbor and stuff like that. Sometimes they call the counselors, the counselors, most of the counselors pass that, that information over to the departments. But they don't feel. But they don't feel confidence. There is a way that we can develop a system that is a true anonymous system, that allow people to say what they see up there, and put it in perspective as of how much money they are, they might be saving at the long run when it comes to increasement of perhaps property taxes and so forth, so on. So as most revenue the city gets, as most likely, that the city won't increase taxes if they say something. So it's some type of incentive that they're helping out the city. The city, at the end of the year, paid off by not doing some increasement or some, something like that, perhaps as an example. There is a way that we can work on some, some type of program that help out people, understand the importance of saying what they seen, or that what it look to, to, to be seen, perhaps. And also, if the, if somebody put a complaint somewhere on a system that is, is, is a good system, if you guys can follow up on Monday or Tuesday, looking at perhaps a construction that happened during the weekend, it's done, and it's not without permit. If you can, if you guys can request that permit on a Monday or Tuesday, once you go back to work, and the construction is done.
Okay, I caught three questions here. I'm going to start with the last one, which is, we do, can we go back and look at a permit after the work is done and issue a correction order? I believe that was the question. We do, in fact, do that. We actually catch a lot of people after the fact. Sometimes in another inspection, it's clear that work has been done. The way that the system works, it captures photos, we'll ask if there's any permitting, and we will ask them to get a permit for whatever work they were, that was being done. Your second point, I believe, had to do with education. We are very passionate about education. We haven't had the staff always to do it, but just in fact, today, I'm going to give a shameless plug if I could. We have the Citizen Academy that's being put on by Mayor Brian DePena and the Lawrence Partnership. You will see Inspection Services at the library this Thursday at six o'clock, and we will be giving a presentation. I think a lot of my team will be joining me there. They're very excited about it. We intend to tell the citizens about everything that we do in Inspection Services, and there's a long list, and how they can report concerns to us. And to that point, we have improved the system, but I think we have a lot of work to do. There's several different ways that a person can report a concern. It can be anonymous. Right now, we have the online portal where they can put in anonymous complaints and tell us what the property is, what the problem is. We'll get that automatically directly through Citizen Serve. As many of you know, I get emails all the time, not only from you, but from the community. I do respond to those emails. We open cases. Everything is in the system. We can go back and track what's happened to those cases, so there's accountability. There will never be a case that will go away because of that, which I think is very important for this community. And we also take complaints in many different ways, whether it's WhatsApp, whether it's a text message, a phone call. The clerks take complaints, but we take them from all angles. I think the most important thing is we have to let our community know that we do that. So now that we do have that staff, starting with this Thursday, in fact, I invite all of you, and I'll send out a formal invite via email. I hope you can make it down to the library and learn even more about Inspection Services and encourage any community members you think might be interested to do the same. But we will absolutely work on that. We're committed to doing that, and I appreciate that feedback.
No, definitely. And just a follow-up question. I mean, those, 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 um, those pop-ups and explanation of what the, what this, what the department does is great. But I kind of call it like the group of the thotty. It's always the same thirty people, including the city councilors. So that's nine, then there's twenty, twenty other residents, which are the same. They know how the system work, but I'm not talking about those. I'm talking more like about, you know, making short, short videos as of, you know, thirty-second video that can share on social media and can reach thousands of people. Perhaps, I don't know what the anonymous complaint is. If it is a short video of thirty-second, saying, "Look, if you go to this part of the portal, you can actually file an anonymous complaint." And those type of things, you know, looking at the real, the real world today, which have changed, I think that's, that's a way that we can definitely ensure that people, that people are aware of how they can do something. And the most important thing, how they can say something without being at risk of any, any situation within the neighborhood. So that's basically what I'm referring to, an education program that includes short videos and clips that everybody can share on social media and stuff like that.
Thank you, Councilor. I want to just tell you that that is a dream of mine, and I was very pleased to learn of Mayor Brian DePena's agenda to do exactly that. He has, he set up a studio, as some of you know. We've already started to send out some messages using that, and he's invited us, his communications director has invited us to do, in fact, that. So I'm hoping with the new staff that we have, we can grow stronger and get some of that stuff out. It's something that I've always wanted to do, so you have my, my commitment. I'm with you on that one.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilors, any other questions? Councilor Rosario?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you think that, honestly speaking, Citizen Serve actually serve our people, and it's convenient for our people?
Do I think Citizen Serve serves our people? I think, is it convenient? It definitely serves our people in the sense that it has, there's accountability, and things won't get lost, and it will be there. We've had a long history where people would wonder what was happening to a case, what inspector was assigned to the case, is the city doing anything about it, that type of attitude. We now have a system that can track everything, which I'm pleased about. Is it a perfect system? Absolutely not. There's a lot of complexities with all of these systems. I'm open-minded, if there was ever a better system to go that direction. I am passionate about the fact that we do need a system. I would hate to see the city go back to paper. I would hate to see code cases not be tracked. I think it's unacceptable to do that to our residents and our business owners. So I love a system. I'm not going to say I love Citizen Serve, but I think we're, we headed in a great direction starting this system. We did get it, some of you may remember this, we, but we, we got it because of the Columbia gas incident. We were given, I believe, something close to a hundred thousand dollars to start up that system. So it was sort of our foot in the door. But now that we have this data, it's something that can be transferred to another system in the future. So anyone who wants to grow and find a better way of doing things, we, we at least have a start on that.
Follow, follow up.
Go ahead, Councilor.
Is it just run by directors and supervisors, or it was run by any inspector? They actually have a case, and they can go back into Citizen Serve and follow up?
Well, it started, fortunately and unfortunately for me, it started Inspection Services. So we, we tend to get a lot of questions on it, but it is for the city. All my, I think anybody who does permitting in the city or issuing of any documents, for the most part, use Citizen Serve. Including you, the Council, have things that go through Citizen Serve. So now it is citywide. But in my department, we do use it for everything. So every inspector that goes out into the public by order is required to put it in Citizen Serve. There's no, there's verbal orders, but they're put into Citizen Serve. But everything is in writing, so that we have that accountability, and we know where people have been and what they're actually doing on a case.
Thank you, Councilor. Director, is there, I know we're now in code enforcement. Is there anything you'd like to add for building inspection or weights and measures?
I think for the most part, these are level-funded with some slight increases and decreases for salary adjustments, collective bargaining agreements, but there's nothing, nothing really more to add.
Councilors, no questions on that? So let's move on to public health.
Public health is really not a lot of changes, just one slight increase to salaries. That's the nurse's contract, as well as, I believe, a clerk with collective bargaining increases. Other than that, it's level-funded.
Councilor, is there any questions? None? Let's move on to licensing board?
Licensing board also has one slight salary increase from a collective bargaining agreement, and other than that, it's level-funded.
Councilors, questions? If not, Director, thank you so much. Councilor Rodriguez?
I have a general question that had to do with every department. So essentially, one of the biggest factor for your departments is also the court system. Housing, the housing court is, is, it's, sometime I actually like to go to the court and sit down up there and just, you know, it's like watching a show. You have adopt a, a system that allow people to, um, to actually fight tickets at the local level. And after that, they, if you guys need to bring it to court, you guys bring it to court. But I see a lot of code violations going on, which can be remediate easier, sometime quicker, through the court system. I understand, I also understand that the court system is full with different cases. But the housing court is fairly quick compared to other courts. Are you planning on going back to that, to that system? If, if, if that's something that you foresee to see, to do?
Yes, so for complicated cases that may have to go to receivership, we still would go to housing court. We would do that through the city attorney in a partnership with them. We also take cases for legal dumping under the acts of two thousand sixteen that were adopted in the city. They go directly to housing court or district court for people who are dumping in our city. Other than that, if it's a code violation, it will go through our forty-U process, which is our hearing officer. Our hearing officer comes to City Hall twice a month, and we have about a half a dozen cases when that happens. And that is prosecuted sort of in-house to expedite it. And the most important thing to know is, as I mentioned before, we're averaging about five hundred correction orders. These aren't just going to places, giving verbal orders. They're things that are in writing, they're documented, they tell the resident exactly what has to happen, and those are the things that do get appealed through the forty-U system. There's just one case I can think of that was appealed from the forty-U hearing officer to the housing court, which is that process. So it will, would eventually get to housing court through forty-U, but it just gives them one last opportunity to talk to a third party that does not work for Inspection Services and plead their case to that person.
Then you mentioned that forty-U, and that was exactly what I was referring to. I remember that during that time when, when we adopted, you also mentioned that the chief association, perhaps, were probably going to be the one looking at those cases, not somebody that is working for the city. Is that the case currently? I know you just mentioned it, but I mean, I want to make sure that that's basically the case?
Yeah, the, the ordinance states that it has to either be someone with a Juris Doctor degree or an attorney, or someone from the Essex County Fire Chiefs Association who has a process for hearings, and they're trained to do hearings under chapter one forty-eight A, which is the fire and building general laws. So currently, we have someone from the Essex County Chiefs Association. The mayor does have the opportunity to appoint a hearing officer, which I believe he has a couple names, but that, that is the process.
Thank you so much. No more questions?
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
We will now, let me just see who's here. Is the public library here? No. Okay. Yeah, pero, yo, ultimo. Can we get Recreation's Department?
Good afternoon, Chair, City Councilors. Natalie Gonzalez, Six Hillside Avenue in Lawrence. For my budget, it'll be in page one.
If you could state your title as well?
Oh, Acting Director of Recreations. And the page will be one forty-five. Yep. One forty-five.
Director, whenever you'd like to begin.
Well, first of all, I would like to thank all of you, because this year, I know all of you have been part of, some part with the Recreation Department, helped out in your own way or donated something to the Recreation Department, so I'm truly appreciated in everything you guys have done so far this year. I also want to thank the other departments that helps the Recreation Department, like DPW, the center, and all the other people that are involved with our department. My budget hasn't changed much, it's pretty much level-funded. The only things that we're adding is a new position. And due to the, temporary wages are going up thirty thousand, for the fact is, you guys know that we run the city summer program. And what we do is with the young men and women that we hire every year, we have to go due to the minimum wage. So we need the extra wages in order to pay them the correct wages every year. So that's why we asked for the thirty, for the extra thirty. You have a question? Oh, no, no, yeah.
Go ahead. I usually, I wait until you guys are at least done with your sentence or your thought before I ask a question.
Yeah, so that's what, that's what, the extra thirty. And last year, we had a cut, usually, we usually had in previous years eighteen kids to work, but last year had a cut it to fifteen in order to have enough money and budget to be, to be able to run the summer program without any interruptions.
Director, so how many, how many kids or youth you'll be able to employ this year?
With that extra money, I could probably go back to eighteen and then still keep it at the minimum wage. And if possible, with the extra money, I could probably do more activities for the kids for the summer program.
Director, I would just ask that when you start the advertising for, for the hiring, that if you could please let the city council know, so that way, we're able to ensure that that type of advertisement is out there in, in the community. My next question, can you go into a little bit details as to the program coordinator as to the why and what this position would be doing?
Okay, so the program coordinator is, is a very important position, and I, there's some studying in some other communities and other towns of what it does. The director, you know, he has a lot of responsibilities regarding going to meetings, taking care of anything that has to do in the upper level with grants, and doing many things in that matter. The program coordinator, and the reason why it was put in the budget is, is to work with the director to be able to program activities throughout the year for the city of Lawrence. One thing, and I know you councilors have seen it over previous years, is we don't have that many recreation activities in the city of Lawrence. Like, we don't have, for example, like paint nights, or have more things for the kids all year round. We might have the summer program that is from July to August, and it's six weeks. But besides that, over the, like, over the year, we have, yeah, Christmas, we have Easter. But what if we could do more for the kids and do more programs where we could have different things? Where, let's say, let's have a paint night using the center, right? Where we could have kids come in and paint four times a month on the weekend. Or if we have, you know, dances or different kind of things. So the program coordinator's job would be to do research and work with the director on creating programs and new activities for not only the young kids of Lawrence, but also our young adults and our older population.
Is this position ordnanced?
Ordinced, yeah.
Councilor, is there any, any questions? Director, if you'd be able to send us an email tomorrow with the, the ordinance for this position, I'd be appreciative. You know, I did look for it, and I couldn't find it. Yeah, but I mean, it's probably there, it's just our ordinances, it's not easy to find things there. So if you're able to send that to us, that'd be appreciated. Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes, when, when you mentioned in the, the summer program, can you please share with us, also, I mean, a lot of the summer program they're about to start? Can you share with us the flyer, if it is any? So we can share on social media, and that way people take advantage of it. And also, we would like to know, like, the spectrum of that, of that program. What do you guys do, what do you guys make? I know it, I have, my kid have been part of it before, but I mean, I wanted to make sure that people knows about the program.
I can definitely do that. I also took into consideration, last year, the council did ask for, when we're hiring the young men and women, to go through personnel and actually have a detailed application of what it entitles and all that. So we are doing that with personnel this year.
Councilor Rosario?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
I'm tired. I remember talking to you a few months ago, when we were talking about putting the budget together. And, and you said your budget wasn't going to change. It, it did change a little bit. But my question is, are you going to survive with this? The, the past two or three events that you guys have has been totally on donations. Totally on donation. And I had a conversation with one of my colleagues, my left, Rodriguez. And, and it's a shame that, that a department, that is one of our department of the city, has been out there asking for donations to do an event for constituents, for kids, for, for our community. So are you going to be totally covered with this amount of money that you're asking? That I don't see any, I mean, it's not a lot of improvement. And I'm going to use a word that my colleague used, perhaps not ask for more donations, which donations are going to come in, people are going to still give. But are you going to have enough funds to say, well, this, it says Father's Day come up, you don't have it on schedule, but I want to do something for Father's Day. I, I have enough money to cover Father's Day if no one donations comes in. Or another event, I mean, that's what I, I, that was the first conversation I had with you when they were putting all this together. And I'm worried a little bit, again, that the last three events or two events that you guys have, it's totally on donations. You don't have enough money, you're not, we don't have enough money. Again, I talked to my colleague and we said, why don't we fund, I mean, why the city doesn't fund the Recreation Department with enough money, that they have money to cover their own events in case that you don't collect enough? So is this will be enough, do you think this will be enough? I mean, you might have 10 activities right now on your calendar, but anything can come up in the middle of the day, any new activity. So are you going to be covered with this amount of money? I'm worried that, because I don't see the improvement to create two or three more new activities. And, and, and we are lacking on activities, probably because we are lacking in money. And I don't think, honestly speaking, for me and my personal, I don't think you're asking for enough to survive without donations.
But before you, you answer that, so I, I would go further, Counselor. There, there's no item here that talks about, you know, essentially, it's one thing to have staff, it's another thing to put on an event. So when, when we look here, there, there isn't anything here that would state that there is money to rent or there's money to, you know, buy, you know, extra supplies or, or anything like that. You know, I, I don't know if the plan is to have folks do some, some grant work on this. I think that that might be a, a good approach that you guys can take. But at the moment, I, I am wondering, you know, how, how will this program coordinator coordinate a program without any funds within, within the department to, to deal with that? I don't know if there's a plan, if, if it's, these funds are coming from elsewhere.
And to answer your questions, part of the program coordinator is to work with the director to get grants and sit down and get that, you know, the resources as much as possible. But to answer Counselor Rosario's answer, in my memo for my budget, I did ask for money to make activities and to do activities. And, you know, this is what I got for my budget. But whatever I can do with this program coordinator to get funding from grants, and you're totally right, the last two events have been done by donations. And it's, it's, it can only go so far that we need to figure out a way to fund the Recreation Department because we can't always just be asking for, you know, for money from elsewhere. And I would love to have more money. Like I said in my memo, I did put, I asked for $50,000. And I also asked for other resources in the department, but a lot of our department money goes to other things. Like, I do have to pay electricity for the, for the fields, and I only get $18,000 for that. And, you know, that's something to take into consideration. So a lot of my money shifts around from my department to take care of some things of the parks. And, yeah, I mean, we, we do what we can.
Counselor Levy?
Thank you. Can you imply a little bit more regarding the temporary salary and wage?
So the temporary salary and wages is to cover the staff for the summer program. So that's what we do with the, with the temporary wages. So when the kids come in in the summer and we have to pay, pay on minimum wage, we use that money to pay for them. And if they have to do, for example, overtime, like, we got 4th of July. If we use the kids to, since the Recreation Department is only two staff members, we usually use the kids from the summer program to work 4th of July. So we'll take a little bit from the temporary wages and pay them extra to help out in the activities that we have during that time in the summer. So that's what we do with that, with those wages.
So you pay the kids that work from there or just only one person?
No, we, we, all the kids from.
All the kids, okay, thank you.
No problem.
To this question, I, I don't know if anyone in the room is able to answer it, maybe Director Iannello. I'm, I'm trying to find out. So I, I was able to find the ordinance, and the position is Executive Secretary and Programs Coordinator. And it says that it should be paid a salary provided for in-job group 10 of the clerical unit. I think if, if, if no one knows the answer, if, I mean, I, I don't know, who would be asked to, to give us this information? So Counselor Rodriguez, if, if you want to just be on the mic.
Assuming that, just to answer your questions, I'm assuming that we need to get in touch with that personal department.
So, so Counselors, can, can we, can we send correspondence to the Personnel Director to let us know what the salary is for job group 10 of the clerical unit?
Yes, I would like to make, make that motion as well as motions, I mean, including positions that are on this budget. So in case that we need any other position that need to be clarified, or we can, we can just do it as a one motion, perhaps.
Director Vellis? Okay, perfect. Okay, so, so we're, we're going to do the motion first, and then you, Director Vellis, speak on it. So it's been manned, is there a second? It's been second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. Director Vellis?
So the program coordinator is equivalent to the Council on Aging Program Administrator. So they're under SEIU union contracts. And that was Nelson Ortiz's job. And then he, when the director left, he became Acting Director. So it, it is under the SEIU union as a program coordinator, so it really falls under that. And I believe it's, I think, I think it's 16, group 16, under SEIU union.
Okay, so, so I think, so that's great to know. So I, it does look like, so we'll, we'll hear back what the Personnel Director says. And maybe the Personnel Director is able, or you, Director Vellis, able to give us more information as to what, what is currently, you know, like, what's taking place right now? If, if that is the case, and that is different than what the ordinance says, and even from reading the ordinance, it does look like you guys need to bring this position up again. Because what, what we're hearing from you as to what this program coordinator will do is very different than what is currently ordinance. What is currently ordinance does not equal the 60,000. What is ordinance is basically, it looks like it's, it's somebody that's picking up the phone and answering letters, right? Not even emails, like letters. So it, it does look like you need to take a look at that and, and resubmit it to, to the city council. Counselors, are there any other questions? Oh, go ahead, Maria? I'm sorry? By Monday. Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, I have.
Counselor Rodriguez?
Yes, well, essentially, I would like to see the following on the Recreation Department. I don't want to go back 10 years from today, I don't want to go back. I want to go back to 2021, which the budget was 442,000 with a $300,000 all the purchases and services. That's what I would like to see somehow, one way or another, in the future. So we can have a, a, a true sense of what a Recreation Department means. I don't know why they used the $300,000 back in 2021, but I would, I would, I would like to somehow see that money being spent on developing new programs for the kids and new programs for the youth. This is not the case today. The council is not on the position to, to add to the budget. We can only reject, approve, or cut the budget. But somehow, I would like to go back to, to years ago to see how we can have the same type of budget of 442,000 to be able to develop those programs. With that said, I also would like to ask you for a proactive way of doing things. I want to keep on mentioning that for a couple of departments, that I see that it's capable of doing that. And I think that you are capable of doing what I would like to ask. I wanted to see a, a, a calendar from the Recreation Department inviting, inviting the councilors and people that are interested on, on participating on, on recreation activities or events, community events that the Recreation Department knows that are going to happen, as well as any other event, perhaps baseball games or, you know, first day of leagues. And so far so long. I know that you guys are capable of doing that because you have the date. It's a matter of just using the technology, probably sharing with councilors on that. I know that, you know, if you guys are using papers for the calendar, I encourage you guys to use a, a digital calendar and invite, invite others to those events. Because definitely, we find out about a couple of things that happen, and we were not invited. Probably not, it was not on a bad intention. I know that probably the technology is not up there. And please, share any type of information with Teresa, she will put it on the calendar. But I think that you guys are capable of doing that, and, and I'm pretty sure you guys are going to be working on that. Thank you.
I can definitely do that. We do have an Excel sheet that I could forward it to all of you if you really, if you want to. So I can definitely do that for you.
All right, thank you so much, Director.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have the Council on Aging.
Good evening, Martha Velez, Director of Health and Human Services for the Center at 155 Haverhill Street for the City of Lawrence. My budget starts at page 136. So before I go into my budget, I just wanted to take two minutes to kind of go over our accomplishments. The first thing I want to say, I know throughout the whole city, everybody's always said, the senior center's closed, the senior center's closed. The senior center has never been closed. Even during COVID, we were really working. What we were closed down for were activities of, of many numbers or high number volumes of people getting together because of COVID. But I just wanted to let you guys know that during this time that we were, which was a long, almost 24 months, we distributed 3.7 million pounds of food. We delivered 1.2 million pounds of food to COVID and homebound elders and residents. The Meals on Wheels program delivered a hot meal in, in partnership with age span to 350 elders every day, Monday through Friday. We continue vaccinating, educating, and outreach throughout the whole community. We provided direct assistance with community resources, application assistance, housing, DTA, raft rental assistance, fuel assistance throughout the pandemic. We received $1 million HRSA grant that we applied for, federal grant that you all approved, to continue to educate on vaccination and pop-up clinics throughout the city that will go all the way until December because it's been extended. Remotely offered exercise classes out in the park, book clubs in the library, arts and crafts outside in the common, and health and wellness workshops at the library, Common Park, and elderly housings. We repaired, hooray, the center with new floors, room dividers and a fresh coat of paint. Throughout the pandemic, we served the dire needs of the whole community, not just the senior community. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to make my own open house because unfortunately, I got COVID the day before the opening house. And, but we were successfully able to open on May 10th to programs to the center. So we welcomed everybody back home. And then the last thing that I want to say throughout the COVID, we also were essential in the census 2021. So that was quite the year, 26 months, I should say. As far as my budget is concerned, Counselors, it's been cut by $8,331. 4,000, if we go to page 137, on the wages, there's an increase of 4,669. That's a step increase. And then the other $1,000 is for minimum wage increase, which is, we have to do mandated. And then our repairs and maintenance was cut by $3,000, instructors were cut by five, and other purchase services was cut by $5,000. So if it's 13 plus the increase that we got, if you subtract, it's an $8,331 difference. Any questions?
Counselors, are there any questions? None. Director, thank you so much for all your work. You know, we, we've seen you active these past couple of years. And I am glad that we're, we're back open. I know that there is a lot of our elderly that saw this as a second home. And being able to reconnect with people in person is something that everyone's been excited about. So thank you so much for, for all your work there. And thank you for being here tonight.
Not just me, but my team, thank you so much.
100%. Next, we'll have Cemetery. Hello, if you can state your name and title for the record.
Good evening, I'm Carmen, Carmen Lopez Bellevue Cemetery, 170 May Street, Lawrence, Massachusetts.
And your title?
I am the Acting Director for the Bellevue.
Director, thank you for being here tonight. If you could, you can begin your presentation.
Well, I really don't have much to present. I have, what do you call it?
So let's start with the page number, one second.
I'm, I'm in page 134.
So it's 1, 133?
134. Well, yeah, 133 to 135, but the detail of the subject is in 134. It's a level-funded budget, and it has been for a few years, and we're okay with it. There is no changes.
So, Director, so you, you've been in this role for a few months. Is there anything that you would like to let the council know? You've also provided
I did.
A document to us. If, if you could just give us a little bit more, more details into what we're looking at. So that way, when councilors take this home, they, they, they know what they're looking at.
Okay, I, I did provide you with some background on the cemetery. The cemetery, it's, it has its own way of operating. So I'm sure most of you have been on your road way further than I've been warming my seat. But I gave you some more in-depth information on revolving funding and our own accounts and an up-to-date accounting on it, and where we stand. And that's this particular page here, and it's accounting. The other one is the annual report. And I must, you know, thank also my predecessor. He did a lot of the work. I just helped put it together, most of it. We've done very well at the Bellevue. And the Bellevue itself has done pretty self-sufficient work.
Okay, so, so just to make sure, so what we have in front of us, I, I think this, this, I, I can't remember the, the, the last annual report. I think this, I can't remember the last annual report that we have seen. But thank you for providing that.
It's been a while.
No, no, so actually, myself and Councilor Rodriguez, a few years ago, about four or five years ago, we changed the ordinances to ensure that the council was getting quarterly and annual reports from different departments, I will say. A lot of departments have stopped giving us quarterly reports. Some of them have continued. So maybe now that COVID is on its way out, that's something that the council would like to take on again. But as far as the report that you gave us, we see a breakdown for 2021. And then there's another sheet. I'm guessing, is that a breakdown for 2020?
No, that's, I gave you the other sheet up to date for 2022 from my accountability.
Okay. So, you know what? I think that's, I think the other sheet, the big sheet, is also 2021.
Correct. All of it is 2021. And then I gave you an up-to-date on 2022.
Okay, perfect. All right, that sounds great. You do, it's right over there. All right, Director, thank you so much. Are there any questions? Councilor Rodriguez.
Thank you for the opportunity. So essentially, I have spoke to the previous director for this, for the cemetery. And he explained to me a few things that were new to me. So I wish that we can have that opportunity to go over a few things. And essentially, like, you know, there's a lot of people that are thinking about the future. And something that is secure is that we're going to pass.
That's for sure.
Essentially, walk me through somebody that have an eventuality and they need to use the cemetery services. How much is, how much is, what do you guys provide in terms of services to the community? I mean, I know they bury people. But I mean, what do they need in terms of money and stuff like that?
Yes, well, we provide a range of services. The initial one would be when a person walks in, it would be care and comfort and empathy and compassion. That's the first one automatically that comes to mind that I provide. However, we have to show them the lot and the land that they would purchase. So we provide that. First, you have to sit down and talk to them finances, what, you know, what they can afford. But we also need to provide is, besides the lot, is, you know, they have to decide. It's a decision that they will make on where they want to be interned. And depending on where they're going to be interned, and we also, I also try to have a conversation because there's a lot of pain and grieving when somebody's passing. But they have to take the time and remember that they're going to bury one person. But if it's a family, you have to try to remind them that later on, somebody in the future is going to pass as well. So they might want to just, not by one lot, but they might want to think of the future that, it could be the spouse, or the siblings, or whoever else is at home. They might want to be buried next to them, right? So we have those conversations. And that's, so, and then they do have to come up with the money. We don't do a layaway plan. You have to pay all your money at one time. And our prices did increase. They will be increasing as of the end of the month.
And what is the percentage that it's going to increase? And how much is today?
Well, right now, it's $900 per lot.
And a single lot?
For residents of the city.
Yeah, and a single lot, only one person can use it?
One person and two cremations. So three, you can intern three person, three people per grave.
Got it, thank you.
Counselors, if there's no other questions. Thank you so much, Director. I wish you luck in this new position.
Thank you.
And if you need from, if you need anything from us, you know where to find us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I interject?
Yeah, go ahead.
I would, since it's a level-funded budget, I would request that this doesn't move up to full council.
So this budget is attached to the entire document? And we, at some point towards the end of our discussions, whether it's Monday or Wednesday, then at that point, the city council, the city council's budget committee, us, will make the following determinations. Either they will vote to send this to the full council with a favorable recommendation, vote to send it with a negative recommendation, vote to send it as a committee report, or vote to send this, whether favorably or unfavorably, with a recommendation that has decreases within the budget. The committee is, the committee and the council isn't able to add or move money around. All they can do is make cuts. So what this council will do, what this committee will do is make a recommendation to the full council as to what the budget should be.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you so much. Next, we will do the parking. Is he here?
Good evening, counselors. I'm Jorge Jaime, DPW Director for the City of Lawrence, 200 Common Street, Lawrence, Massachusetts. Parking is, right now, we have a cut of $150,000. It's just because we're not going to use the shuttle services.
Page 163?
Page 163, yes, correct. So those, that cut of $150,000 is just because we're not going to use the shuttle services anymore for the museum square garage. Everything else is level-funded.
Thank you. Counselors, any questions? Seeing none, Director, since you're up, let's start with DPW.
Okay, so that's page 108. So we have, there is an increase of $424,000. Half of that is solid waste disposal contracts and a few positions that we asking to add for some of the departments. So for buildings and facilities, we asking to add a new carpenter and a new painter so that we can be able to do more working house due to the, a lot of repairing that we need to do in some of the offices and the DPW yard. So we just have one carpenter and he's not enough to continue doing the job by himself. As the same thing with the painter that we have. So the other position that we asking for is two outreach coordinators for the recycling. So due to the amount of trash that we are managing, so we have to see if in the future we can reduce that, you know, educating people to recycle. So with the leadership that we have right now, with the new recycling coordinator, I think it's good to add two more bodies to her, you know, to go out there and knock on doors and try to reduce the amount of trash that we producing and decrease it. So the other position is just a transfer from water department. That's going to be the senior clerk. It's not really adding that position. We just transferring that position from water and sewer to streets and parks in DPW.
Can you let us know which page you are now?
So that's the page 111.
Thank you.
So that $41,000 for the senior clerk, we just transferring that from water and sewer offices to the DPW offices.
Are you pausing for questions?
Yeah, I'm open for questions right now.
Great, so if we could actually move us forward a little bit to street lighting?
Streets.
Yep, street lighting, page 118. Yep. Now, Director, this is a question I always ask every year. And, you know, I always expect the same answer. But so every year, the, the cost of lighting is somewhere around $600,000. And every year, it tends to go up, right? Electricity cost doesn't go down, it goes up. I think that there might have been somewhat of, less of an increase when we switched over to different, the different lights and stuff like that. But for the most part, electricity costs go up. I see that last year, in 2020, was $621,000. Then it was $676,000 in 2021. And right as of April, we were at $400,000. So I'm assuming we're probably going to be at by the end of the year, close to $700,000. But what's budgeted is $400,000. So I'm assuming that you will probably come back to us and ask for $300,000 from free cash.
So we are now expecting a saving in its street lighting because we switched to LED. So everything, Mark is more involved in that because he was from the beginning in this negotiation, right, Mark? With Amoresco. So we are expecting to have a saving on more than $300,000 for these fiscal years. So that's what we're expecting right now. We definitely changing everything to LED, even the fields that we had. Right now, we changing all the lighting to LED too. So we expecting at some point, see that saving that is warranted.
So you expect, do you have an idea of what the costs are to date when it comes to that?
So right now, so...
Well, if I could just explain briefly, the, when we switched out our, when we purchased our streetlights or we bought it for a dollar, I think we bought all of them for a dollar, and we switched them to LED. The contract, we had Amoresco handle the entire project. And they guaranteed us our savings. So if we don't get the savings, they've got to give us the savings. So that's in our contract. But what they, when they switched out all the streetlights, they had to communicate that to National Grid, who had to change how we got invoiced. And that hasn't taken place yet. So their National Grid and Amoresco have to get our accounts all straightened out so we can obtain the savings on the streetlights. So that's where we are right now. I guess the, there are some meetings in Jorge's office. There were some meetings a couple of weeks ago with National Grid and Amoresco to try and get this all straightened out. But we do have guaranteed savings in our contract.
Director Ionello, so as to the cost of this year, if we don't get the savings that we were expecting, we will be seeing, Amoresco, is that?
Amoresco is the name of the company that does this.
So they'll be cutting a check?
They'd have to give us a check, that's correct. I know they're not going to because we did get the savings. But that's their, that was guaranteed in our contract.
Okay, thank you. I believe my last question, Director, if you can speak a little bit to budget for solid waste. I see that it stayed, that it's staying the same as of what was approved last year. But I also see that in FY '21, there was a higher, there was a higher expense. So I'm just wondering, is if, do you guys believe that the trend is, is that folks are going to be throwing away less trash?
So yes, that's the reason why we asking to hire to outreach coordinator to, you know, try to decrease the amount of trash that we are, you know, that the community is producing out there. So definitely it has to calm down. And I have the confidence that that's going to happen. So we had to go out there and knock on doors and keep the numbers down on the amount of trash or solid waste that we are picking up right now.
So years ago, one of your predecessors said that in the course of a few years, he was seeing that there was an increase of like, pretty much like every year of close to 30% increase in solid waste. You know, the tunnel is, the people that, the stuff that people were throwing out. Are we still seeing that increase? Has that leveled down? Has that decreased at all?
So really, right now, it's increasing because the illegal dumping, you know, is, is, is a lot of trash that people put out there, you know, near to the river, in the parks, on the streets. And really, we had, we, you know, are working with inspectional services, you know, to go out and, you know, educate the community, you know, and let them know what to put and not to put on the trash. And, you know, and find people who do illegal dumping. That's why the direction that we had to take, you know, because we don't have like a transfer station. We really don't have a place where people can go and dispose those, that extra trash that they produce. Somebody moved and they just leave it there. Whoever is going to leave in that apartment, just put it outside. You know what I'm saying? At the end of the day, so we pick it up from the curve or we pick it up from the river, but we're going to end up picking it up.
Counselors, are there any other questions? Councilor Rodriguez.
Thank you, Director Jaime. Thank you, Director Jaime, for everything they have done so far as a DPW director. Some of the questioning that I have is around the general operation of the DPW. So currently, I know that there was a lot of vacant positions before they were never filled. Are you currently full of staff?
So there were nine positions that were open when I was appointed as a DPW director. All of them were, they filled right now. So I will need more, but that's a process because for us, you know, to ask for more guys, I will need to ask for more vehicles because I had to move them around. So it has to be little by little, and we working on it. So right now, so we have three new vehicles that are going to be purchased. So when the next budget comes, we ready to receive a couple of more guys. But right now, that's the staff that I need. So I'm really full of staff right now.
I see here on the budget, they have a cutoff of $140,000. That is the position in regard to the CIP manager?
No, that was the municipal manager. So we cutting that position and adding that, you know, to be able to hire the senior clerk at the office and adding some of that for the outreach coordinator. So we're really moving that money to another.
Not that one. I'm talking about the position funding through CIP, $140,000.
Tell them the page number?
111, the same page, but a little down.
What's the page again?
111.
You said the $41,000?
$140,000.
That's the CIP manager and the administrative assistant or principal.
Yes, that's it, yeah, that's the principal clerk for the CIP project manager.
Is that, I'm wondering if that's position and is that shared position? Because I mean, I remember when we were on the receiver that we were required to have a CIP program. So how are we going to manage those projects?
Well, the CIP manager is, or the capital asset manager is still involved in, and we have three schools going on right now. We have two schools, I mean, and a police station. And then the existing projects that are still ongoing from the last capital improvement plan. We didn't do a $6 million capital plan this year because of the new schools. But we will be doing capital improvement plans in the future. It's just going to, they're just going to be a little smaller. So we still, we still need somebody to manage all these building projects.
I mean, we cutting the position off. How are we gonna do that?
No, we're not cutting the position.
I mean, it's $140,000 less.
No, no, what this is reflective of is the capital asset manager on the... Put my glasses on. On the second line down, that's $95,000. And then the principal account clerk, I think at $45,000. That totals $140,000. So what we did was, you know, just wanted to make sure those two positions are accounted for in the budget, but they will not be charged to the DPW budget. We're gonna charge those salaries to the capital projects that they work on. So, it's a wash. It doesn't cost the general fund any money. They're gonna be paid out of bond proceeds.
Got you.
But we didn't wanna lose track of those employees.
Okay. Those are the little tricks that we don't know until we ask those questions. All right. You... I also see that you're gonna have $35,000 for a new vehicle? Or something like that, related to that? That's on page 122... Hold on. No, and 120... 124. Vehicle supplies?
Vehicle supplies, yes. As you know, we are responsible to... For the maintenance of the police cruisers, so that means a lot, you know, and that, you know, that is increasing the amount of vehicles that they have, plus the amount of vehicles that we have.
So essentially, that $35,000 for parts and stuff like that?
Part, yes.
Okay. No more questions, thank you.
Director, on that question for repairs and maintenance, it doesn't look like much was spent as of April. So it looks like $4,000 was spent and $20,000 was allocated. Do you believe that that money's gonna be spent in the next couple of months?
Absolutely. The report that we have is we, you know, getting short every year on that line item. And, but, before, we used to... We used to cover most of these expenses during the winter time. But right now, so we not able to do that. We had to, like, right now, all vehicles that were damaged during the winter time, we had to repair with the regular budget, so... Because temperatures are 90 degrees right now, so when you do the report, so who's gonna believe that you fixing vehicles that were damaged during the winter time? So that's the reason why we putting in the right, you know, line item right now.
I guess I'm trying to wonder when the shift occurred, because it looks like historically, it's been $2,000, $3,000 that has been spent. So essentially, I guess what I'm hearing from you is that from April till June, there's gonna be a lot of time being spent on fixing these vehicles, and from April till June, that's when we're gonna see most of these expenses being done. Is that correct?
That's correct, Counselor.
Okay. All right, thank you. Counselors, any other questions? See, now, Director, thank you so much for being here tonight. You know, you're... We put you... I know that you were at the top of the list, but you're also one of the biggest ones. And there's usually like tons of questions for your budget. So I just want that... That's the reason that you're... You came up last. I don't want you to think that we were just trying to avoid you, and I wanted to make sure that my colleague that's not able to ask questions to you is able to stay for as long as possible. So thank you so much for being here tonight. And for all the work that you and the rest of the DPW team do, as we are out there in the community, folks were very happy with your... The work that was done during the winter. So, kudos to that. And I hope that... I am glad, being someone that has pushed for the recycling ordinance, and that was pushing to ensure that the city was creating a plan to deal with disposal and to deal with recycling. I am glad to see that you guys are working on that. What I would suggest to you is that I think, you know, there is an item that the recycling ordinance is still tabled in the full council. I think to bring it up would require some... Some changes, some amendments to that. I look to your leadership in moving that within the administration because especially because there is new... You know, potentially will be new growth within the recycling department, and it looks like you guys are identifying disposal as a goal. I think that this ordinance will help you. And I think I'm very proud to hear you guys talking about that because it's an issue that I think has been going on for years. The fact that we're spending $2 million plus on disposal is huge, and that we don't have a plan to either reduce or at least keep it steady, I think, is a disservice to the community. So, any work that you do on that, I think it's moving the ball a lot farther than it has gone in the past. So thank you so much for that. I see that Counselor Rodriguez has a question or a statement.
Yes, essentially, thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity again. Well, the DPW department is the most important department in the City of Lawrence. And I have a true statement as of why. When people see the police department, there is issues. When people see the firefighter department, there is a fire. But when people see the DPW, it's because they're gonna solve a problem that affecting their quality of life. And essentially, this is one of the department that we need to keep on supporting because that quality of life that we keep on mentioning throughout four years, it's been done through the way that you guys are doing. So thank you, definitely. Thank you so much for everything that the department is doing in conjunction with all the departments walking together towards the one main goal, which is basically the... A good quality of service for the people. And essentially, I would like to keep on pushing for those maintenance that we forgot and, you know, that we've been... You keep up with it. And I'm glad that, you know, the request that I put it up there are not just waiting for month, and they're getting done quicker than before, obviously. Appreciating that you hire more people. And I appreciate of you hiring the temporary workers. They're gonna help a lot, and they're gonna keep on making Lawrence a better place. So, definitely thank you for everything that you guys are doing.
Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you so much. We next have water. Water and sewer. Unless you wanna go last, you know, which...
Hey, come on. Good evening, Counselors. I'm Milagros Puello, Water and Sewer Commissioner, located here at City Hall, 200 Common Street. I'm here to present my budget for fiscal '23, which starts on page 171 to page 181. Our budget, my... Well, the water and sewer budget is comprised of three divisions. Sewer divisions, water administration, and water maintenance and operation. We have an increase of... I have an increase of over $562,000, which includes mostly the salary increases per our CBA commitments. I have included some additional increase on expenditures that are being balanced by reductions of other line items. Open to the Counselors' questions.
Counselors, are there any questions? Counselor Rodriguez.
Well, Milagros, thank you for being here. Again, the budget... I look at this... It looked like a decent budget. Obviously, there is a lot of things that you can go over and look at. I can see that in positions, you have 13.5 positions. You have...
In admin. That's for admin.
Yeah, for admin.
Yep.
And how many total positions the department have?
So, we have 46.75 positions in the budget, and the .75 is because of the splits between the directors and a few other positions that we share with DPW.
Okay. So, the city engineer work as...
Correct.
Work for the...
Oh, yeah, city engineer as well.
For the department as well as the DPW, half and half?
Yep.
As well as the director?
That's the odd number. But we have 13.5 in admin, 12.75 in... Actually, 13.5 in sewer, 12.75 in admin, and 20 in the water division, which is the largest.
Commissioner, I would like to talk about one little thing.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if there is any study being done on that? There were increment. So, that's something that is coming up in the near future? And how that look like?
So, we're currently looking. We're doing the rate increase analysis within the department. As the Counselors know, the city has not seen a rate increase in water and sewer since 2009. And we are due. We're due mainly, as you can see, one of the largest item that increased in our budget for fiscal '23 is about a $500,000 increase on our debt service. The department has taken on a lot of work in the last 10 years, which is great. It's good. It's good for the city. We are improving our infrastructure. But that's... Most of that work is being funded through loans, through the SRF, mostly through the city, through the state SRF program. So, we... The city has made the commitment to make those investments, and we have to pay those back. So, that number is scheduled to continue to increase. So even if I... If the department were to say, oh, we're not gonna be spending any more money on capital improvements, which we really can't not do, that our debt service is gonna continue to increase in the coming year. So we have to get to a point in which that... We have to increase the rate so the department can cover operations plus the debt commitment that we have taken on to improve the systems.
So, on the different story that you have seen, what is the percentage that different story have gave you, perhaps, on the water increment?
We... I'm not quite ready to present those numbers, Counselors. We are crunching the numbers. We're trying to lessen the impact to Lawrence residents as much as we can. That's directive. I've given our engineers are performing the analysis. We're trying to keep it as low as we can so people are not affected tremendously. But I don't have the numbers in front, yet.
So when do you expecting to present those to the City Council?
We're hoping that this fall, to come before you to present, just to initiate that process.
What is the process? How we... What we... What we gonna see in the fall? I mean, are we gonna see a sheet, wooden study, that you guys decide? Or what is the process?
So, the way that the analysis is being performed, the city has a financial model for the retained earnings account for the water and sewer department. So in that model, you will find information regarding our CIP. So with anything, any future projects that we have planned, you'll see our debt, you'll see our operations budgets in that. Based on the numbers that we're putting into that model, we're able to project our expenditures in the future. So we're seeing how much money we... And our revenues as well, I'm sorry. So we'll see... So based on the information in the model input, we're able to project our needs, the needs of the department, based on the revenue that we're taking in. You know, the model shows that if we do nothing, our retained earnings, it is gonna become critically low in a few years, you know, in a few years from... Actually, by next year, will be critically low, and then after that, it's gonna go negative, in which at that point, if we don't have a rate increase, then the department will need to be funded from the general fund.
And essentially, the state take over?
No, I'm sorry?
And essentially, the state take over?
I'm not sure of that. I'll defer that question.
No, that's fine. We don't have to.
Oh, okay.
We don't have all the details on that.
But it's not... Definitely not a position we wanna be, see ourselves in.
Yeah, it's just as Millie mentioned, if the... If we don't have a rate increase and the water department can't pay their debt payments, the city guaranteed those payments, so we have to pay it. So we'd have to put those debt payments on our side of the budget. So we'd like to keep it on her side, so we'll get there.
Got you. Well, essentially, that's... I'm very curious about how that gonna look like.
Yep.
That's something that we have to be aware that the water is gonna increase. Still wondering by how much. But yes, we need to keep on... We need to keep the conversation going because that's essentially a fact.
I understand. And the plan... My plan is to have conversations with all the Counselors. My plan is to come before City Council and explain to residents how we... You know, the numbers that we're presenting and the impact that it will be to the residents, and hopefully plead our case for, you know, to get the support that we need for the department because, you know, it's something that we need to do at this point. We can no longer postpone it. So, but we are understanding that we, you know, that our residents can't... You know, we're not gonna be putting in, you know, 50% increase on the water. We have to be sensible and to the... You know, to the needs of our residents as well. So, lessening the hit as much as we can.
Now, going back to now, the water department. Few years ago, we have a conversation about the different lines that were not in compliance. We all said with the staff, I mean, I remember that we were talking about different... A few services that were not in compliance with the current law. They have lead, perhaps, services. That all replaced?
Not yet. We're almost there. So the City of Lawrence is one of the few municipalities in the Commonwealth ahead of the curve when it comes to lead and copper, the incoming lead and copper rules that the EPA is mandating. During our meter switchout, the City of Lawrence took that opportunity to, you know, create a spreadsheet, a list of the materials, a list of the materials of all the services that we have in the system. So, we know where our lead services are in the system, and the city initiated a program a few years ago to actually take on the lead service replacement on from the residents. And actually, the city performs. Our operation crews go and replace the services. We typically do between 10 and 12 services a year. And when I started with the department, we were over 100 services left in the system. And right now, we're less... I believe we're less than 50, but I can... I don't have the exact number. But we're definitely making strides. You know, where a lot of municipalities are now kind of wrapping their head around what this lead and copper rule will be and what it means for their system, we're on top of it. And EPA recently did an inspection of our water treatment plant and our distribution system process, and they were very happy to see the information that we have, how we had arrived at it. And they were very comfortable with the process that we have in terms of dealing with lead in our system.
All right, great. Another question that I have around there, around that. Essentially, when we had that conversation, it was because we were having some issues with the... With the pH and everything. Is that solved?
That's all resolved. We have not have any exceedance, any issues reportable incidents at the water treatment plant or our distribution system.
I have a few more questions, but I'm gonna allow others to ask questions.
Counselors, are there any questions? Counselor Rodriguez.
Well, essentially, I have a few questions, but I mean, I just went blind right now. I probably gonna send you an email with those questions. By the way, I know that we replace all the meters, or most of the meters. It... How far we are from 100% of those replacements?
We probably have around 1,200 services that we still have to do manual readings on. We... A lot of them is because residents do not wanna change the meters, Counselors. So we've been taking advantage of sales. Whenever we get a property that's... Um, whenever we, we get a property that's, that's gonna be up for sale, they have to come to, to the department to request a final reading, and then a fi- and an inspection prior to the sale. So we take those opportunity to offer to the new owners, uh, the opportunity to sw- uh, to change their meters to an electronic meter. Uh, and we've seen, with, that's one approach that has, um, you know, gotten us to, to a more meter switch out. But, uh, we haven't, we're not really actively pursuing those, those meters, we just take them as an opportunity stick, uh, basis.
Now, although you mentioning the electronic meters, uh, I also need to mention that is a lot, that is, that is some tricks and hacks that people use to avoid the reading, uh, and, and how we doing with that? I mean, I know that people use devices perhaps to avoid you guys reading the, the ten, and, and, and then there's a problem with that, uh, with the total bill.
There are various, uh, there are various methods of tam- of tampering, uh, of meters and water service in general. Um, you know, it's, I've seen, since I've been with the department, I've seen a few here and there, people do get creative. I don't wanna mention the, the creativity that we have, you know, that we've seen.
But I would like you to mention the consequences of doing that.
Uh, well, if you don't pay your waters, essentially, it costs us money to produce water. And we split that cost among all our rate payers fairly. Um, so you pay for what you use, we're not gonna charge you more, we're not gonna charge you less, you're just paying your fair share, your, your fair share. So when we see, where, if we start seeing, um, you know, people not paying their fair share, it's just, that's, whatever's not being paid is just split among the rest of the actual rate payers. So I ask people that if you see something that looks odd, please call the department, we'll happy, we'll, I'm happy to send an inspector uh, to the property, or, you know, to investigate whatever you see, you see that's, that's not right. Um, you know, especially when there's change of ownership. Uh, we, we've caught a, a few incidents in which the house is, you know, is being sold, or it has been, you know, vacant for a long time. And we call them there, uh, and then the new owners end, end up with, you know, with, with the issue. Uh, if you're do- if you, if you're doing a home inspection, you're gonna be buying a home and something looks, looks odd, before you buy, before it becomes your account, um, please reach out to the department and, and let us know, let us come in there and address the any issues, um, that may, that may exist.
Somebody that is, is seeing that, they seen, they, they, they getting an, an estimated bill. Uh, with a, uh, with the numbers that are not the actual numbers, the current numbers. Uh, so people up there that are getting, uh, a bill that says estimated on, on there, so I'm, uh, it's, that's something, that means that it's not the accurate number.
Correct.
Uh, do you guys change the format of, uh, the bill that, I remember that we have a conversation back then, a couple of years ago, that says, the estimate that says, it's, it's on the, on the.
Yep, whenever, to, to be truthful, just to be clear, there, there may be instant in which your meter stops reading, uh, it may be the meter may be defective, the MTU unit, which is what sends out that, that reading, the data out to our system may become defective, um, may become this large wire, maybe disconnect, the mechanical equipment. So there's, there's room for, for issues there. So whenever a meter goes, um, you know, does not, is not reading, or is not sending out the right information, uh, we get a, we get a notification from our data, and, you know, when we, when we doing our bills, we see the accounts that are gone from active to estimate. So the estimate, it, uh, means that we're in base, instead of getting an actual reader, reading from the meter, it goes into historical usage. So if that account, if that property was using a hundred, you know, H, HCFs, you know, for the last three months, they're gonna continue to get that a hundred. Uh, it gets to a point that if, um, and then the meter in your bill, you will, you know, in the water bill goes from A, which stands for actual reading, goes to E, estimate, or W. Um, and the Ws is, we, we, it's, it's a forced number. Uh, you know, within our billing system, we're able to actually enter numbers i- into that. And we, we, we start seeing Ws when the meter has been estimated for a long, long time, for mult-, you know, I'm talking years, and we're not getting a response, 'cause when you see that, that, you're, the, the, the reading type on all bills should always read A for actual. Whenever, whenever you see that change to an E, immediately contact the department so we can address the issue that's causing the estimated bill.
So, and essentially, that's basically the, what was my questioning back a couple of years ago. Uh, that little A for actual is very small, and that little E for estimated is very small. Is that something that you guys can, um, I don't know if you change it to say a bigger estimated letter?
And, and, uh, to that point, a notice was added, uh, starting a few years ago, a note was added to the bottom of the bill stating this is an estimated bill written, and, you know, at the bottom of the bill that states that. What does, what we do understand is a lot of people pay their water bill in automatic. Uh, you know, they get their quarterly bill and they pay it, they get the quarterly bill and pay it until they see a significant increase. It's, it's what triggers people to kind of like, oh wait, how come I was paying four hundred dollars a quarter and now all of a sudden I'm paying a thousand? Uh, and that's kind of where the Ws come in, but, uh, for, but for the most part, that's the reason for not, a lot of the, not catching a lot of the estimate, or people not seeing a lot of the estimate, is that they just pay their water bills in automatic, which we appreciate. But, uh, but do every once in a while, do check it, and see if something looks odd, and, you know, we're happy to go in there again. We do, we go in, the meter continues to read typically, uh, so we're able to go in and see, and, and then address, and make the adjust, the necessary adjustments to, to get you an actual bill and get you back, uh, online.
Alright, thank you so much, I just, um, um, thank you for, for everything, for the presentation.
Uh, uh, thank you, Commissioner, you know, I, I think, um, by the amount of questioning Councilor Rodriguez gave, I think you are now his favorite, uh, department, so, uh, so, sorry Director Jaime. Uh, um, uh, you know, uh, Councilor Rodriguez just, just moved, moved you down a little bit. Um, Commissioner, thank you so much for being here tonight, um, I'm sure that we'll be seeing you soon. Uh, so thank you, and thank you and everybody in your team for all the work that they do. Uh, last but not least, we have the public library. If you can state your, your name and title for the record, please.
Yes, Janelle Abreu, Library Director, Lawrence Public Library.
Uh, thank you, can you let us know what page number, um,
Absolutely.
You're starting in?
Page number one forty-nine.
Great, well, thank you for being here, I, I, I got a little worried, you know, 'cause, uh, we, we, we called you at the beginning, but I saw you come in, and I was like, okay, awesome.
Yes, I apologize for that.
No worries, I, I was, I was trying to get you out here early.
Yeah, likewise, we're understaffed, so I had to, uh, take in a role of one of our library assistants, and
Okay.
Our library hours today was until eight PM.
Wow.
So it actually worked out, sometimes, uh, getting scheduled for last.
Yeah, impressive, uh, well, yeah, yes, Director, uh, if you can lead us through your presentation.
Absolutely, uh, I think this is a perfect platform to, um, take a moment and explain all the things the library has to offer, just to make sure that the city and this patrons are aware, um, and there's no misconception of how many things we actually do for the community. Um, just this year alone, we've have, let me go ahead and lower this a little bit. Just this year alone, we've done numerous programmings, uh, we've done fitness series, unwind paint nights, fifty rappers, um, who changed the world, introduction to pronouns and gender diversity, flow with workshops, art programs, jewelry making workshops. Um, we've tailored things to do with what community are requesting, uh, we've done them both virtual and in person. Most recently, we just finished our book, uh, club, and the book was, um, The Memoir of a Geisha. And now we've obviously started a new program for the summer. And the summer program is starting June twenty-seventh with our kickoff. And we have programmings all the way from grade four, I mean, from age four all the way to teens. Uh, we've been able to provide, uh, programming that consists of reading, literature, writing, as well as, uh, uh, boxing technique for the teenagers. And all these programs are implemented and structured around our community needs. And on top of that, the library has, um, expanded on not just books, and that's why I wanna make sure that we continue to clarify here. Although that is provided by us, and we have a great, um, great special collections. We also, uh, do things that, uh, provide other things, for example, we have, um, applications through our website called Pronunciator, which allows you to learn and, um, various languages. We provide hotspots, so that if you don't have wifi, especially after pandemic, you can create one of those hotspots. So much so that they've become popular amongst the city hall when they're hosting something, and they can actually use the hotspot to livestream. Um, the mayor has requested one from his staff personally, and as well as we have one being used with the mental health test for at Saturday's event. Um, and that's all being, uh, those are all products and, and being produced and offered by the library. Uh, in addition to that, we've had the senior center library tour, English conversation circle, and just two weeks ago, you saw us here in front of you requesting the rest of the, uh, grants from the multicultural to do our muse- our cultural passes, which allows the public, um, to, uh, get reduced pricing on parking and, and passes to the zoo, the aquarium, and, um, a lot of the, um, uh, museums that are in the city of Boston are not nearby. So with that being said, as you saw in the budget, there wasn't much of an increase, um, with what we're doing, um, and what we plan to continue to do in the library. Uh, my predecessor was great enough to go and seek the finances elsewhere, and we have currently nine active grants. I'm, I'm sorry, eleven active grants. Um, to be able to foster and continue to allow the library to expand on this, on the resources we have to offer our community. Uh, those grants have allowed us to work on new signage that not only, um, speaks to one population, but also includes our Hispanic community, which is, uh, rationally big in the city of Lawrence. Um, we've also have been working on our health literacy program, which we've provided those, um, examples um, when we had our opening, and those health literacy programs allow a kiosk to be used for the public so that they can go ahead and have telehealth conference, and we assist them on how to do that, or, um, if they need, uh, those rooms in private. And that allows for, uh, the, the patron to have those, um, conversations in private with a healthcare provider, or any conversation in private, and the great thing about that, we also have a health literacy program where you can, uh, use a, a tablet that we have provided by another grant, and get any information for any concerns regarding your health. And these were all things stimulated by what our, uh, what our community was facing during the time which is pandem- the pandemic. But it's, it has steered us to be more, you know, technologically advanced, incorporating the library to pivot. Um, and then, in, in essence of all that, uh, we've received a great support from the mayor, so you know, he's, also sits in the board of trustees for our library. Unfortunately, um, our board is currently in a waiver plan with, um, the municipality appropriation. And that, what it is, is a municipal appropriation requirement, and we're currently in year two of that five-year plan. I'm waiting for the question, but I can continue so that it looks like I captured you. So essentially, the waiver plan is putting pressure on the municipality to, um, also assist us with taking some of the responsibility and dis- the disproportionate cuts that the library faces. So, and instead of the state taking a lot of the responsibilities, or us using a lot of the state, uh, funding for it, as well as seeking grants and so forth, the municipality, because of everything we do and the services we provide, would, um, would appropriately distribute a, a budget that's according, that's appropriate for the library and the amount of residents we serve, which is about ninety thousand. Um, in order for, for us to be able to get out of this waiver and to fulfill the requirements of the waiver, we're, would be four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars or so short. So, we are appreciative of the ten thousand five hundred dollar increase. However, we, we, we do, we are in year two, and the municipality must admit a financial plan um, written in conjunction with us, library board of trustees, to see how we see ourselves in five year, getting closer to that shortage.
Uh, thank you Director, just, uh, one question, this waiver, uh, is it, how, how long is, is the waiver for?
Five years.
And you said, and we're in year two?
And we're in year two, and that would allow us to lose our accreditation.
So.
If we lose our accreditation, then that means we don't get support from the state. And then that would, again, now be more costly for our citizens, because now it falls again on the municipality.
And, um, how much is, uh, how, how much is coming in from the state? If you don't know, that's fine, you can, you can, you can.
I can provide that number.
You can send us that answer, um, through email. Uh, no, Director, I know, always knows.
I know, good, thank you.
He has all the facts out there.
Thank you.
So, um, in the next three years, we have to increase the budget to the library by four hundred thousand to, uh, keep, uh, receiving the three hundred thousand, uh, we get from the state.
Essentially, yes.
I, I hope that happens, um, I think, having gone through, being a member of the schools, uh, school committee uh, and spending years, um, trying to get the city to provide the, uh, four, four percent of the budget that was required by chapter seventy, uh, and, and not seeing that occur, uh, sometimes, I, I wonder, um, you know, uh, our, our, our funding priorities, uh, i- if they always equate to what, what, what should be uh, and what's required, but I, I, I wish you luck on that, I think that's something that like the, a lot of people don't know, and hopefully, uh, councilors are able to take that and, uh, ensure that the community is sort of aware that in the next three years, we have to, before the next three years are up, we have to have a plan in place to, uh, be able to fund uh, uh, the library with the, um, the, the, the right of mon- uh, of money to ensure that you guys have the tools to do what a library does. I think sometimes people don't prioritize the, the work that libraries do, and they don't, um, understand, uh, its value. Uh, so I think you, you have a, a lot of work, uh, cut out for yourself, uh, I think, you know, all of your achievements, um, all, you know, all your predecessors' achievement, all your achievements, uh, moving on, are going to be some of the tools for those that wanna advocate, uh, for the library, that can they, you know, that way you can kind of showcase and kind of see like, hey, look at what the amazing things are being done, imagine if they were adequately funded, uh, you know, what else could they do? Um, Councilors, is there any other question? Councilor Rodriguez?
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter. Well, essentially, uh, uh, thank you for presenting what you guys are doing. It is, it is extremely important for the people to know, uh, what the library is doing. So currently, uh, around how many people are here, does the library serve?
Well, essentially, we're here to serve around ninety thousand people, but if I was to give you, we do do stats, and just last month alone, well, actually, I don't have the stuff, the stats for May, so the stats for April alone, we had four thousand four hundred and forty-four, um, incomers, and that's including them just using anything in our services. Um, so if you see that in a yearly platform, you're talking about whether we're serving the same resident or not, you have to treat it for every time they're provided a service, because every service is different. So, uh, we're talking maybe in the year somewhere between, and this is all, again, top of my head, somewhere between twelve to twenty thousand.
And, uh, you have two current locations, right? One in south and one in north?
Correct, and our, currently, our south branch is closed, it's been closed for the last two and a half years.
Uh, there is any plans around that, uh, locations, uh, what do you guys, what's the conversation?
Right now, we've been actively, uh, working on hiring, uh, when I, uh, took, um, my role right now, I had eleven vacancies. We've been able to fill them and currently just have, uh, four vacancies, and one of them being a children coordinator and three part-time library assistants. Once we're fully staffed, that would help, um, with distributing staff members between both libraries. But I did have an, um, hit the floor running, and I had an energy audit done with MassSafe at the library to see the condition it was in, um, and to see how much it would take to get the building to have the calification that it needs, like, and, uh, uh, weatherization and climate control, especially when we house very special collections like the Irish collection. Um, so right now, it's closed, and because in the conditions that it is, there are things that are concerning to us. But right now, with, if we get the staffing up, we can go get there, get through the material, and hopefully find the support, and, um, what we need to do as a breakdown to get that library fully functioning again.
Uh, essentially, uh, that, that, the library is, is a place for people to get information and to be educated, but as well, um, getting some services or perhaps anything, uh, it could be, um, any type of courses, anything that did need to do with, uh, instructing, uh, the community, which we definitely appreciate. There is a lot of, uh, grants that has been going through the library. And, uh, but I guess that, uh, at some point, uh, we need to work on something and that something is, uh, a community calendar. If you want to get something done, you give us to the busiest, right? So you guys are doing a great job in many, many tens and I think that exploiting the possibility of having, uh, a, a common or, um, everybody's calendar, um, will be a great, great idea. I don't know if there is any type of fun for that, but I mean, looking at that stuff will be great. I mean, there is a lot of things going on at the library that we don't know. There is a lot of others that kind of find out and, and the mayor's has been doing a great job in terms of inviting, uh, the councillors, uh, to different events. But the library, uh, events and activities, uh, there is a lot happening there. And essentially, we would like to get involved, to hope.
I would, I would love that and I think that that's what it is. I, I want to make sure that I go away with saying that the library holds our history and, and it holds who we are, not only as our patrons that continue to, whether things are changing, whether we move out or move in. Uh, our city councilor member was just in Virginia with our mayor, uh, visiting, um, of Vietnam War hero for POW and they were from Lawrence and those are things that come back here, those stories come back here. So in essence, um, what do we do? What do we give the public to know how, what we're doing to move towards the future? We've have created online forms for filling out your library card, both in English and Spanish, digitized, so that if you don't, are working parent and you're not able to get to the library to fill out the form physically, we're able to provide that to you through our online platform at, uh, LawrenceFreeLibrary.org. In addition to that, we've created forms so you can sign up for the si- any summer program, um, for your children or the teens through online platforms as well as social media, so you can register them online. Um, and it also allows my employees to know what outreach is. We don't have an outreach coordinator, some libraries do. So I have, we have to train our, our library's assistants to do so and go out to the community. So how do we make it more accessible for them to do so? We create the relationship. Um, I also had the privilege of speaking to the assistant superintendent today for the schools and they've showed a lot of interest in how we can continue to collaborate, to the point that they sent us their reading list, so now.
Hold on a second, hold on a second. You were able to speak with the school?
Yes.
Great, oh my gosh, Jesus Christ. We finally get somebody to speak with superintendent, oh, that's, the assistant superintendent.
The library should be the bridge between the schools and, and the city. So how do we do that? And, and, and with the limited resources we have right now, we hope that changes because if it continues to go the way it's going, then we will be more limited than we are right now. But as I stand here today, I will be continuing to work on those bridges. And speaking to the superintendent, uh, assistant superintendent Melissa Splash from the school, we've already to have, already started to have those dialogues, how to get those field trips, how to get those library cards, how to get the reading materials so we can assist with the literacy coordination that the school needs. And we're doing that. So we continue to hope with your support. Please sign up for the things that are available and if you have any questions or anything you'd like to see amended or changed or added, please let us know because we look forward to doing it.
Just one more thing. Uh, please send those, uh, any event that are, are, are going to happen in the near future, so we can, uh, we can probably participate. Thank you.
Councilor Levy?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, just only one question. Do you know when's the, the library at the South loading is going to be open?
The library in South?
Yeah.
Well, right now, uh, although I said I have hired a field position, the onboarding process for the city is a little bit slower, um, so I, I don't have a time for you and I don't want to, um, make one up either.
Is the elevator fixed?
It is, it actually is, the elevator's good to go and it's in good condition.
Ready to go?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Levy, uh, Councilor. If, if there's no other questions, councillors? Thank you so much Director for being here. You're, you're, you're ending the night with us. Uh, thank you for all the work that you do. You have a good night.
Thank you as well.
Uh, councillors, if there's nothing else, uh, is there a motion to recess?
Don't move.
There's a motion to recess, but second by Councilor Levy, all those in favor, please sign it by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Good night.